I really walked away from my time at Stanford realizing that schools are in a really important place for children. You know, I see it as like the center of that village and it can't be the only thing. Like kids have to have other places where they feel safe, where they feel healthy, where they're being encouraged to grow and be courageous. And for too long, we've kind of asked schools to be the only place where kids can grow and grow up happy and healthy. And so, yeah, that home, that sense of home to me is about, schools are a place where that can be built really readily and we need to work really hard to build those places for kids when they're not at school too. Because I would have really benefited from having more places outside of school to be, as would anybody. I'm Brianna Mullen. I'm a 2020 member of the Knight Hennessy Scholars Program. I'm a 2021 alumni of the Graduate School of Education and a 2023 graduate of the School of Public Policy. I imagine a world where every child has a village to help them grow up happy and healthy.
Welcome to the Imagine a World podcast from Knight Hennessy Scholars. We are here to give you a glimpse into the Knight Hennessy Scholar community of graduate students spanning all seven Stanford schools, including business, education, engineering, humanities, law, medicine, and sustainability. In each episode, we talk with scholars about the world they imagine and what they are doing to bring it to life.
Today you'll be hearing from Brianna Mullen, a KHS alum and recipient of master's degrees from both the Graduate School of Education and the Graduate School of Public Policy. During our conversation, you'll hear about Brianna's experience as a California lifer, being a marching band kid, building an organization that democratizes and diversifies school boards, and so much more. We're so grateful to have Brianna Mullen on today's episode. Actually, let's just get into the introductions as we get started here. I'm Lee Thompson, co-host, business school at school now, yay yay. One of my co-hosts is always Taylor Goss.
That's right. Coming from the Department of Music with the Music Science and Tech Program, and also just completed all my coursework for my Master of Arts in Public Policy Program.
Yay!
As of, as of the end of this quarter.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
How's it feel?
It feels great. Okay. It feels really good. I, uh, I feel energized by knowledge of public policy.
You know, so a lot of folks don't know that Taylor's the person who I took the most classes with at Stanford.
This is so true.
I took more classes with Taylor than any other person at Stanford. I have roped him into some wild classes.
Right. Yes.
Well, you need to get into a second because obviously the person on the other end of this, of this mic is the one and only Brianna Mullen. We have the fantastic privilege of knowing, yeah, how you doing today? By the way, let's just get some of the pleasantries through and then we'll probably get into some of that stuff.
Yeah, I'm wonderful. It's so nice to be back on campus. Stanford in the spring is gorgeous. Like seeing all the wildflowers pop up on campus. I still remember like my first spring, which was in 2021, and just being like, whoa. And it was actually really gorgeous because it was during the pandemic and there weren't doing a lot of landscaping. And so, like the grasses got really tall and there'd be foxes and jackrabbits on campus. And so it had kind of a more wild feeling than Stanford traditionally does. And so I really loved being back on campus in the spring. It's, I've lived in California my whole life and I try and never take for granted the weather and like the beautiful Northern California that we have to explore here. But I do, I do take it for granted all the time. And so, um, coming on campus and seeing it again is really nice.
Yeah. You took me fountain hopping for the first time.
I did take you fountain hopping. Yeah.
It's gonna be revealed.
What's fountain hopping, by the way?
Oh, yeah. So fountain hopping, there are all these scattered around, I almost said LSU campus, scattered around Stanford campus. And it's tradition for students, graduate students included, to go around and get on a swimsuit on a sunny day and go play around at a fountain and then hop to another one and hop to another one, maybe with a drink or two along the way.
Yeah, a little speaker. I had a little cart from the graduate dorms that we were all living in. We'd like go down and pull the, the cart with like a cooler and a speaker and hang out. And I love it. I mean, I was in Chicago the summer for the first time and they have some amazing like public fountains for kids and families to play in when it's hot outside. And I don't know, I think that those kinds of public spaces make me feel really joyful. There was a Knight Hennessy scholar once who told me, they were a med student who, you know, just traditionally have like a really grueling schedule.
Yeah.
And I was asking them, it was Mohammed, and I was asking him how he was gonna like spend his free Friday, like one Friday off that he was like, he's like, I'm gonna go watch little kids like play in the fountain and like enjoy the sunlight and like just experience like the joy of being on campus. And I was like, that's gorgeous. Um, I'm gonna do that now tomorrow too. That's like my Friday plans.
Yeah. Yeah. Shout out to Mohammed. He makes use of his, of his spare time, the little that he has. He's a bright light.
The little time that he does have. I think that's just something I've learned a lot from Knight Hennessy Scholars is like how to pause and like how to be and how not to do all the time.
Mic drop.
And a pause.
And a pause. And a pause.
It's so interesting because I think if you looked at all the information about Knight Hennessy Scholars, you would think that's all we are doing is doing. And I do think there's a lot of value in, in taking that pause and reflecting and resting. And so I really appreciate that. I mean, as we, we've already heard the Imagine a World statement, which we'll get to in a moment. And we even started getting into a bit of your origin story before. But before we talk about the world you imagine, Brianna, let's talk about the world you were born into and have experienced thus far. So where are you from? You mentioned you're a California lifer, but where are you from? Big state. And what was your journey here at Stanford?
Well, so really funny, I was born here at Stanford Hospital.
Whoa.
I was not from here. My family and my parents met, um, they were waiters at the Red Lobster in Pacifica. And
Ghost biscuits, man.
Oh, man. And I was the first baby born in Pacifica the year that I was born. My birth announcement's really cute. It's like I'm the catch of the day. And it's like a Red Lobster menu and I love seafood. I think that this has like deeply influenced my love of seafood.
They knew who you were right away.
Right away, right away. And I was, you know, the first baby born, strong Capricorn energy, like coming out in newspapers, you know, stuff like that. Yeah. So my parents met here and I spent the rest of my life growing up in the Bay Area, in the East Bay, in Concord, Martinez, and Walnut Creek. But I really claimed like all of Northern California as my home. And I, you know, just got to be a person in a place that I think, you know, most people dream about. And I didn't even realize was so special until I got older. I'm the oldest of five siblings. So I had a lot of family members all in and around my house all the time. But it was hard to, you know, we were growing up, you know, very working class and working poor. And the Bay Area was experiencing a lot of inequality and displacement of people at the same time. So I got to see a lot of different parts of the Bay Area and I think places that a lot of times get invisibilized when we think about like the shiny parts of San Francisco and even Silicon Valley. But there's so many places where working people are living. And at one point, my, my stepdad was commuting from Concord to San Francisco and it was like two and a half hours like away, like with traffic and everything. So yeah, I love the Bay Area. I have so much joy in being raised here. And I also have this like vision of it being a very incomplete place. Like I want it to be something that I think it isn't quite, but has a vision of becoming. And I grew up in, I like to say, like the most average public schools in America. I went to really average public schools and these public schools were amazing. Like they were places that really made me feel safe and feel loved and feel welcome and seen. Another thing that I took for granted that I never understood was that like lots of kids don't have public schools like that, that even are safe places to be. And because home wasn't always safe for me. And so I like vividly can remember still like getting to school really early in the morning because I was part of marching band. And I was the president of the marching band.
She's the president, we're speaking as president of the marching band.
Which is different from the conductor or the director.
It's different than, I think you're thinking the drum major.
Yes.
The drum major is like the person like standing in front. Yes. Okay. So my best friend was drum major. I was the president. I was like the behind the scenes person, which is like a theme in my life and work. It's like, I like to be kind of the, the person behind pulling the strings, but maybe not the person.
But in a benevolent way.
In a benevolent way. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like Kingmaker, but benevolent. Right? For the best, you know, doing a lot of the servant work that I think even at a young age, I was always really interested in like service and like community service and how I could engage with my community. Had somebody tell me the other day that they, like since 15 years old, like I was always like creating community and creating like hangouts and parties and things. And I think I was just trying to create something I didn't have, right? Which was a big group of people who were all supporting each other and thinking about what we wanted to do. And marching band was so amazing for me. Like I don't play any musical instruments more. Taylor knows this, but like being a marching band kid was like my biggest identity. It taught me so much about being a part of a team, about working really hard on a product, on like a performance that can be like two to five minutes sometimes, like very, very short, but you work to perfect that thing over and over and over and over and over again. And it's also, I loved kind of the invisibilization of the marching band. Like you're not meant to stand out. You're meant to be part of this cohort. You're meant to create this beautiful piece of music, but you're not, if anybody like, if you're standing out, you're not doing it. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Being a band kid was really important to me. I also, looking back on it, like my band program was like medium sized. We had like 80 to 100 kids in it. But it was kids from all across the school, like kids in like, you know, classes. I was in like a lot of AP classes and they were all tracked and that was always like a very consistent group of kids. But the marching band was kids from all over the school, kids who probably would not have been coming to school if it weren't for the marching band program because they weren't excited about anything else that was happening at school. And so I really felt like that was a safe place for me. And opening up the band door room at seven o'clock in the morning after walking to school and like getting hit in the face with all the sound of like instruments warming up at seven o'clock in the morning and like feeling like I was at home. Like I had just left a house, but I was finally at home is like a feeling that I think about like probably once a week. Because I think without that place, that band room for me, like that's where I felt safe for many, many years. And, and that's how I got involved in school boards.
I love the way that you talk about music. We've talked a lot about music in the time that we've known each other.
Yeah.
But in particular, the way that you talk about it and the way it influenced your life. It really hones in on the role that the music and the arts play in education and in community building. And I, you know, I just am so glad that you had that. But not, not only that you had it and that it was available to you, but that you had the willingness and the openness to walk into that band room and say, oh, this is gonna be my family. This is gonna be my home.
Now Knight Hennessy for me is that, right? So it's like, it's funny. I've like searched for these different communities as I've like gone through my life. But having it when I was a teenager and having it in band, like band parents became aunties, uncles, like people who took me in. I ended up moving in with a mom who was a third grade teacher of a friend of mine in band my senior year in high school. And some of the parents, like I mentioned, who I met through the band program, they lived to my Stanford graduation in June. So it really became a place for me to get support, have people in my life. And it was the place where I was politically educated as well, because my band teacher really treated us like we were young people who deserved information about what was happening to our education. And at the time I was in high school during the recession and there was massive cuts to public schools in California. He told us and talked to us and taught us about, you know, first of all, that music was always political, right? We studied jazz music. And so we studied particularly how jazz music was used by black musicians as a space of refuge and as a place for their own political identity to be expressed. But we also talked about why we deserved high quality public education. And during the recession, my band teacher was like, look, like the district is gonna cut like a lot of positions and you deserve to know because this is gonna affect your education. So that's how I ended up getting involved with my first school board meeting.
Right. Yeah. So you said, not on my watch.
Not on my watch.
Not on my benevolent watch.
Yeah, I was really upset because I had four younger siblings. My youngest siblings were 14 years younger than I was. And I, you know, was very involved with raising them. They were only four at the time when I was in, when I graduated high school. And before that, we, the district was cutting the district music program, which is so often the first thing on the cutting block. I cannot tell you how often, like when districts are dealing with budget cuts, that elementary school music is usually the first program to go because it's a part-time program. It's usually taught by like one teacher, spread across the district. And it's just post No Child Left Behind in the early 2000s, like not considered part of the core piece of the curriculum. And I was terrified. I was terrified that the program that had provided me safety and refuge was not going to be around for my younger siblings. And I didn't know what their schooling experience would look like without it. So me and my best friend Vivian Law, at the time, we went to Michael's and we got like $5 black t-shirts and puffy paint. And we like made these protest t-shirts that were like war against music education or something really dramatic. And we showed up and I waited all night in the back of the school board meeting to get my two minutes at public comment. And I was doing my pre calc homework in the back and got up to the podium and talked to them about how important I thought the music program was and how I really didn't think it was the right thing to cut it. And I had a school board member chastise me and tell me that I didn't know what I was talking about and that I was kind of a silly little girl and that I needed to go up to Sacramento because really wasn't her fault. It was really Governor Schwarzenegger's fault.
Darn.
Willie.
That's great. If that doesn't make it in, I'm gonna be really sad.
I think it will. Did you actually play war as you were making these war shirts?
I wish I had. Um, I think we were just like, we didn't understand. I mean, we did understand. I mean, this is the thing about being 15 or 16 is that like you often do have like a lot of clarity over like what's right and what's wrong. You may not need to know all the details, but like so often adults feel like, well, you don't understand the details. And it's like, I don't know that I need to understand the details. I understand that you are radically changing my public education and I'm upset with that. So.
And you should have a voice in, in, in how that plays out, right?
Right. I, I think I was just developing my voice. Like I was terrified. Like I really still remember like the nerves in the pit of my stomach. And frankly, like I still have nerves all the time when I go up to give public comment. And I've done it now probably hundreds of times. But when you're 16 and you feel like, you know, you don't expect to be kind of like talked down to.
Right. Right.
Um, and then I was, and I was like, oh, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about. So.
Well, how did that, how did that make you feel? And what did you walk out of that room deciding to do?
Well, I took her word. I was like, okay, I guess I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm gonna like work really hard. And so I had a college counselor who at, in my high school was like, hey, you qualify to like apply to the UCs for free. Why are you not applying to UC Berkeley? And I was like, I don't think I'm gonna get in. And she was like, well, it's free. And it's just like, you have to click a box. And like, why don't you just like click that box and like try? And I was like, okay. And I did. And I got in. And when I got to Berkeley at that point, I was, I was angry in a lot of ways because I had seen how like predatory lending and the recession, my parents really affected by that. And I was like, what's going on here? Like, why is this happening? I wanted to understand my own story, but I also wanted to understand like some of the macro levels of what was going on. So I ended up studying history, education, and city and regional planning, which kind of was like a detour a little bit, but ended up changing a lot of, well, I think about problems now because I think about the space and I think about the spatial reality of the way that we live in them. And so I spent four years studying as much as I possibly could, you know, about how we got here. Like we being like 20th century America, right? And like, why were public schools underfunded? And why do public schools even exist, right? Like who created them and for what reason, for what purpose? And who has access to them and who doesn't have access to them? And, you know, I met amazing peers and, and really good lifelong friends of mine who, you know, were undocumented students in LAUSD and experienced a very different public school system than I had, right?
LAUSD.
Los Angeles Unified School District, which is the second largest school district in the country. And yeah, I think that I realized, I was like, whoa, okay, my very average high school and, and public school experience as like a white person in the suburbs, right? Like looked very different than a lot of my peers. And I felt more deeply than ever that we all deserved that thing that I had gotten, right? Which was caring adults providing me not just like a safe place to be, but they were the people in my ear whispering that like I was amazing and that I could do something with my life. And then I could go to college and I'm the first in my family to go to college. And so like, without those people in my life, I don't think I would have set my sights on where I ended up and where I ended up.
And, and at Stanford called it your FLY. I didn't, I didn't know that they called it.
Yeah, yeah. This is a new acronym that I like adopted after it came to Stanford. It's like FLY, First Generation Low Income. What's interesting at Berkeley is that so many people are first generation low income. So it wasn't as clear of an identity for me at the time. At the time I identified as like an independent student because I had moved out when I was 17. And so when I was at Berkeley, I was like, I was on my own. Like I didn't have a place to go on Christmas breaks. Like they would kick you out of the dorms and I'd be like, where am I going?
Right.
And during summer breaks, I would take classes and work. And so for me, Berkeley became a, a home for me very, very intensely, very deeply. One of my tattoos is the Berkeley motto. It's actually my first tattoo, which means, Fiat Lux, which means let there be light. But it was just this place that fed my soul, my like intellectual soul in a way that I was like, oh, I found my people. Like I found my, my people who want to be courageous and change the world. But also I spent so much time diving into like, why, why is this a problem? Like, why are we even dealing with this problem now? And I got one internship or I took one internship when I was at Berkeley, um, working for the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. Then they hired me after graduation. I got really lucky with my one internship.
All it takes is one.
It had to do with us.
And you mentioned a lot around like homes and it really sounds like you found homes in multiple stages of, of your life, which is encouraging, reassuring, and very inspiring, to say the least. And even when you talk about your Imagine a World statement, I mean, I think what I hear at the crux of this notion of having a village and being happy and all these emotions seem to evoke this idea that like the kids can find a home, right? And two quick things. How did you get to this Imagine a World statement and how it's conceived? And is it different now than it would have been earlier in your life, you think?
Oh, totally. Yeah. I was just thinking about in the shower today. I was like, when we first did the Imagine a World exercise at the 2021 Knight Hennessy Retreat in Asilamar, which was magical, to say the least, I would have, and I think I did write something around the fact that like, I imagine a world where school boards can be part of creating like an amazing multiracial vibrant democracy, right? Like, and I still absolutely, that is like 90% of my waking hours is thinking about how school board members can be part of a more vibrant multiracial democracy. And Willie, you'll probably spend a lot of time thinking about this existential question next year in the polls degree. But I really walked away from my time at Stanford realizing that schools are in a really important place for children. You know, I see it as like the center of that village and it can't be the only thing. Like kids have to have other places where they feel safe, where they feel healthy, where they're being encouraged to grow and be courageous. And for too long, we've kind of asked schools to be the only place where kids can grow and grow up happy and healthy. And so, yeah, that home, that sense of home to me is about like, schools are a place where that can be built really readily and we need to work really hard to build those places for kids when they're not at school too. Because I would have really benefited from having more places outside of school to be, as would anybody. I spend a lot of time thinking about other people's kids now. Like, I, I think that's what it comes down to. And I no longer identify as like a youth organizer the way that I used to, right? Like when I was 16 and for a long portion of my career, I was like, I was a youth organizer. I was organizing. I was involved in student government really heavily when I was at Berkeley. And then when I even went and joined, I worked at the California Department of Education right after graduation. And even then I was like, I was the young person in the room, right? I was the person who could share the perspective of a vulnerable youth who is served by schools, right? That was usually my perspective as a policy advocate. And now I find myself shifting identities, you know, I'm in my 30s now, which is a fun transition life moment. And, um, now I spend a lot of time as like queer auntie and a much older sister and just a person in a lot of young people's lives, friends who have kids, you know, I, I really love being a part of their lives and being part of like the larger village that they have around their kids. So now I'm starting to think more about like what the next generation of kids deserve and firmly how I can in some ways take a step even back further than I have been and let the next generation of young people really articulate what they need so that it serves them.
As not surprised, most things you say are beautifully said. I'm wondering, once you left Berkeley, entered the career path of public policy, working with Department of Education, I believe, right? How many people did you meet along the way that you felt shared that vision in the way that you describe it?
Well, everyone I worked with at the Department of Education did. Like I worked with the most amazing team. The State Superintendent that I worked for, he was a former cross-country coach and environmental science teacher in like the early 1970s. He was teaching about climate change in like 1972 to his Title I high school, which is like basically a low-income high school.
Okay. Objectively ahead of the curve.
Right.
Truly. And he organized his high school students, his high school students got him organized in both ways, right? And they formed the first national insect refuge in the United States.
Oh, wow.
And then they also like organized with the city council to stop the closure of like a recycling plant in the city. And through those two like campaigns that they were working on, he decided at 26 to run for city council. And he was a high school science teacher who ran for city council. And, um, he lost his first race by 40 votes, won his next race and continued to win for many years on. But working for him taught me so much about my leadership strategy and my leadership vision because he believed in teamwork above all else, like anything. Like our favorite phrase was, this is like a, I don't love the abbreviation of this, but it's like African proverb, right? Which is like, if you want to go fast, you go alone. If you want to go far, you go together. But he meant it in a really, really deep way where he was like, we're not gonna go anywhere until we have everybody on the same page and the team is together. And for that, he showed me what that meant on like a statewide level of like, how do we get the teachers and the principals on the same page and move them forward? How do we get families and advocates on the same page and move forward? Because schools are really complex institutions and people kind of want to ask everything from them, right? They want schools to be able to do everything. They want them to be able to get your kid a great job and teach them how to be a person and teach them social emotional learning and financial literacy and how to read and how to do math and how to understand AI and not be manipulated by like, you know, there's just like the list of what schools are supposed to do never ends. And I think a lot of times we set the bar really high and then we get upset when schools don't meet that bar. But so often it's really about trying to get a team of people to think about how to get schools there because it's a collective project. And schools, education in America has always been localized. It's very unique in the world. We have like a really unique education system that puts a lot of power at the lower level. But working with the people at the Department of Ed, when I was there, was the group of people that really taught me how to work in a team and how to not put my vision of what I want before, like what the collective vision is. So I was a policy advisor for the State Superintendent at the time. And then in 2016, President Trump was elected, Betsy DeVos was appointed educational secretary, and our work changed a lot, as you can imagine.
You don't say.
And a lot of that came from the fact that California had a very different vision of what we thought schools and public schools needed to do. I got to run statewide initiatives, trying to protect undocumented students and families from ICE being on campus. At the time, we were trying to build multilingual education, build back multilingual education because in California, for 25 years, we had only allowed teachers to teach in English, which in a state where, you know, families speak 65 languages at home is just absolutely a travesty. So, but what I saw in that role post 2016 was that I could be at the state and I could be doing amazing public policy initiatives. But at the end of the day, school boards made the final decisions. And it was weird. It was weird to be at the state and like have all this presumed power and then be like, oh, wait, so we have to convince school boards? And they're like, yeah. And I'm like, oh, okay. So I'm gonna go work for them, actually, because I really want to work on these things that I think matter a lot. And it turns out at the state, I think a lot of people think the higher you go up in public policy, the more power you have. But it really depends on the issue. And in education, most of the power for educational decision-making is at the local level.
And you've gone about finding opportunities to work with these school boards to enact this local change, the Equal Justice, also Equal Justice, Education Justice Academy, the EJ. I'm always thinking of the Equal Justice Initiative. I don't know if that happens to you often?
It was kind of purpose, unpurpose.
So I've, I've been accepted already.
You've been accepted. I absolutely, actually, before my Knight Hennessy interview, I read, what's Brian?
Just Mercy.
Just Mercy.
Just Mercy with Brian's last name.
Brian Stevenson.
Brian, I read Brian Stevenson.
That was a Jeopardy moment.
Yeah. I, I read Just Mercy and learned a lot about Brian Stevenson's work. And I was inspired because what I really took from it is that you need to go where the work is most important. You need to not stay in the place that you feel the most comfortable to do that work. And you also need to be building power with people on the ground in order for things to change meaningfully. And one of the things I love about EJI's work, that we've taken a lot for EJA's work, is the is the focus on often like left behind rural suburban exurb communities. My family has lived in rural Arkansas for the last 12 years and I have my younger siblings now are in public schools there. And so when I think about EJA's work, which is to equip school districts with school governance leaders who are going to push forward educational justice, we are going to places that nobody else is going to. We are going to that rural Central Valley school in the middle of an almond field where 90% of students are, their parents are farm workers, right? And so many of them are undocumented. And we are going to the inland empire where, you know, there was really like the first black suburb of LA for a long time. And a third of the students in San Bernardino unified have been homeless for like the last eight years, right? So those are like big structural problems in those communities. And I think that the best thing that we can possibly do as an organization is go in, find local leaders and give them tools and resources to be able to solve their problems themselves. Because oftentimes we have this notion that like, somebody's going to come in and save us. Or like, you know, somebody like some funder or some philanthropy or whatever, somebody's going to come in and have all the solution sets. But really what we're talking about creating stronger school governance is like, do people in the community know who the school board are? Do they know what powers the school board have? And are they in conversation and collaboration and are they on the same team, right? Like, are we building a team for kids? And so when I imagine getting to this village, like a stepping stone for me to this village is like strong democracy at the school board level. Cause we have 90,000 school board members in America and they're one fifth of all of the elected officials in America. And they're largely just like not thought about when we think about creating healthy communities. People write them off, I think largely because they don't realize what they do. And school districts are a separate government entity. They don't sit under the mayor's office that often, sometimes in bigger cities they do. But even then they're often treated as kind of like a separate project, a separate policy initiative. But really what we're talking about when we're talking about school boards are like the people who represent democratically children. And there's actually no other elected officials that like, their 100% responsibility is children's outcomes. So that's where I see school boards being so crucial and so important. But it's going to take people on the school board who really understand the community. And it's going to take the community really understanding what the school board is supposed to do and holding them accountable.
And this organization, the Education Justice Academy, was something that was incubated within Stanford, within Knight Hennessy and is now supported by the Knight Hennessy program through the impact grant. Could you talk about how that process of bringing EJA to life happened?
Shout out to the Global Impact Fund.
Shout out to the Global Impact Fund.
Shout out to the Global Impact Fund. Yeah. My first line of my Knight Hennessy application was that I wanted after graduation to start an organization that would recruit, train and support diverse school board members. So I came to Knight Hennessy to execute this mission. Like I came with a lot of clarity about like what I wanted to try and do and everything.
It was clear. It was always clear.
People started to know me as the school board girl, which was not a bad thing. Cause like anytime anything would happen on campus, I'd get like 15 emails from people like, hey, did you see that there's a school board thing? And I'm like, this is perfect. Everybody now knows like I'm the school board girl. And I first took the leap with EJA in the first Keystone project round when Director Tina Seelig was piloting the Keystone projects. It was still during COVID, so we were figuring things out. But I had two scholars at the time join to just start to help us sketch out the learning outcomes of what we would eventually end up teaching. And it was amazing. I had Darren Wallace, who is a very good friend, another Berkeley bear. And he is a PhD student in the Graduate School of Ed. And I also had, what's Max Denning? Max was a school board governor for the hospital school system he sat on, worked in in the UK. It was so interesting to have that international perspective of like, okay, what's common here about just like anybody who's overseeing a school like internationally? And then I, EJ was a Keystone project the next year and we involved another like six to eight Knight Hennessy scholars from the med school, from the business school, from the law school, from the ed school, from the engineering school. People from all over Knight Hennessy came because they all had felt like public schools had played a role in their lives and their journey of getting here. And they wanted to give back. And so it was incredible. We had them design our application, write our definition for educational justice, which we still use, figure out how we were going to run this program, how we were going to pick people. Before we even like launched our first academy to train school board members, I think we had had like 15 Knight Hennessy scholars in some way, like touch the program and touch what we were trying to create. And that was just, I don't think there's any place else in the country that I could have gotten that kind of expertise and that kind of diverse perspectives on what we were doing and what we were trying to do. And I see it every day, like the work that the Knight Hennessy scholars have helped us create is like creating a really strong foundation for what we're able to do now.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll just also say that every time I've heard you pitch EJA, even at the Keystone Celebration Festival, I believe, like, yeah, man, we need to do some, I feel energized like, yeah, we gotta do something about this. Like the average age of a school board is 60 or something. It's like, why aren't they younger? You know, that's why I think, I think it goes to show a lot, like the clarity of thought and the clarity of purpose with which EJA is going about its business. And you mentioned how scholars have provided a foundation. And so if the foundation home, I'm loving the language. Building this foundation, how has the grant helped you build on that foundation to start scaffolding other aspects of the work for EJA?
I mean, it's been huge. I mean, first of all, I graduated in June and I've gotten to work on this project full time since June, which for anybody who knows anything about like social entrepreneurship or nonprofits, like getting to a sustainable level for a nonprofit is a Herculean task. I like to say my partner runs a business and I like to say it's like running a business with both hands tied behind your back, right? Like, it's just so much more difficult when you're talking about revenue and capacity and programs. And impact, you're often expected to like have been doing the thing for years before you get money. So the fact that Knight Hennessy was able to give us a seed grant is so amazing and so unique. Like to get that seed grant to work on this project full time, it meant that we ran our second cohort. In the fall of 2023, we trained amazing all women of color cohort, actually in Oakland, in Barriessa, in Glendale. Our cohort ranged from 24 to 64 and just people doing incredible work right now. And we got to support them right now, right? Like we didn't have to wait a couple of years to scale up. You know, also being a first gen college student, I'm also a first gen founder. And so
Everything first gen.
For everything first gen, first gen college student, first gen grad student. And then when you throw in the like Stanford Ivy plus thing, right? Like that's a whole nother aspect of the work that's really difficult and, you know, new. There's just so many things that I'm learning all the time. So not only has the impact grant given us the ability to like have resources to fund our work, but the team has been so supportive. Stacy Pina has like provided us a ton of communications infrastructure that I just like really want to appreciate her for because so much of what we're trying to do is tell a new story around school boards and tell people, you know, even if they don't run for office, even if they don't show up to a school board meeting, people knowing that school boards matter and that they should be voting, about 12% of people vote for their local school board members, which is really low.
Yes. One in eight, everybody. Everyone's tracking that.
For those non-mathematicians.
And so, you know, we're just trying to get the word out there that like, we've trained 10 school district leaders so far. And there's 6,000 in California. There's 20,000 on the ballot in 2024. So we are only going to be able to work very deeply with a small number of people. But if we can get the word out there that you should be paying attention to who your school board member is, you should be finding out what they care about, what their priorities are. And you should be at the very least like Googling their name and trying to see if they have a website, you know, when you're on the ballot. Cause most people just skip them because they're on the bottom of the ballot and I get that. And I totally understand sometimes very hard to find information about them. And that's one of the things we're trying to change is make sure that, you know, our graduates are going out there and really engaging with the public very meaningfully so that, because schools can't do this all by ourselves. Like we have to have more people involved. And we need different people who think differently and have different resources. We need business leaders and we need engineers. I worked with this person who was a landscape architect who just joined a school board. What a cool set of skills to bring to a school district, right? Like it is still very much a public project of figuring out how schools run. So we want to try and bring lots of diverse people into the role, people who have never seen themselves in the role before. Willie mentioned the average age is 66, 80% of school board members are white. And that just like doesn't reflect what's going on with our kids and our families. And post-COVID, post-COVID learning losses is very steep. But one thing that's happened after the pandemic is I, I hope that my silver lining viewpoint is that people realized how important schools are to our like whole society functioning. Cause like as soon as schools weren't open, like nothing else worked, right? I think the labor that schools do for our kids and in raising our kids and feeding our kids, like, you know, I work with a lot of schools now that feed their kids like breakfast, lunch and dinner, provide mental health supports for kids. I had access to a counselor when I moved out at 17. That was so important for me. I don't even think, I don't even know where I would have been if I didn't have somebody checking in on me at that time. And so, yeah, the, the needs for kids have never been higher. And I think that we all have a role to play in getting involved. And so one thing I'm doing right now, that's like completely separate from my work with EJA is like, I signed up to be a substitute teacher in my local district. Cause I moved back to Sacramento and I'm at home taking care of my grandmother. And I'm like, I could substitute teach like one day a month and that would be a really great way for me to still stay engaged with schools. There's a massive teacher shortage, if you haven't heard about it. And burnout for teacher is like at an all time high. We also have a massive substitute shortage. So you don't have to have any qualifications except like be over the eight, like over 18 and like pass the background check to be a substitute teacher right now, because we're in like such a dire state for emergency subs. So I'm looking forward to like going and getting like absolutely roasted by some Gen Alpha like middle schoolers. I think it's going to be so good for my soul. Like, you know, it keeps, keeps me young.
Do you get to keep, do you get to pick the grade or level of these substitutes? Okay. All right. That's why I was like, if you chose middle school, then you.
I was in a classroom for a year when I was in undergrad. I was a literacy tutor in East Oakland at a community school, actually, which hugely influenced how I think about schools because I saw my second graders were, the school was three blocks from the Fruitville Bart station, which, um, yeah, if folks are familiar, Oscar Grant was killed by a Bart police officer on New Year's Day or New Year's Eve. So it's a community that has like a lot of, like honestly, it's like a fairly violent place to be outside of the school grounds. But on school campuses, it's such a wonderful place to be. And they had dentists coming to check on the kids' teeth. A lot of people don't realize like kids can be acting out because they actually have like cavities that are causing pain. So just providing that, you know, my first boss really helped popularize the idea of like the whole child framework. And this is something that I believe very deeply in that like kids can't learn until they've come to school and they're like happy and healthy. And then we can teach them, but there's like a lot of things that go into like kids coming to school happy and healthy before we can teach them. And one thing during the pandemic that we did is that we like cut child poverty in half through the childhood tax credit. And then we let it expire. And so now childhood poverty is back up to where it was before the pandemic. But there are absolute things that we can do to make the job that schools have like much easier. And one of the things we teach in EJA is really like, how can school board members partner with other local governments, other organizations to help address a lot of those outside of the classroom concerns? Cause they don't stop at the classroom doors. They obviously come in the classroom doors. And so we have to be mindful and schools have to be good partners in figuring out how we can make the job of parenting a lot easier. Cause you know, I know you're thinking about it all the time. Daddy Willie, but I, I don't know how anybody really parents right now. It seems like a very difficult task.
Yeah. The sheer breadth and depth of your understanding of the field in which you work is always very impressive to me. Especially the way that you so specifically and thoughtfully understand the connections between all stakeholders involved and all parties that have an influence and all aspects that should be considered for this holistic child viewpoint. And the thing that comes to mind is that I've always seen you as a person who does that with whatever you're working with and wherever you are. And when it really comes down to it, it is hard to be a first gen undergrad and a first gen grad student and a first gen founder. And you bring such care and kindness and light into people's lives. And so I see you as working in such an impactful field, doing it in such a thoughtful way and making so much space for relationships and friends and family in your life. That's a lot. We've talked a lot about how hard it is to have your irons and multiple fires and sort of stay happy and stay surviving and stay with that space physically and mentally to give to other people. How do you deal with times whenever you're overwhelmed or when the vision doesn't seem as clear?
Talking about pausing for a moment, like graduating and going back home and slowing way, way down was really hard for me. I take care of my grandmother and she has dementia. And so like my conversations with her look very different than like when I was at Denning, where I'm like having these super stimulating, intellectual conversations. And one thing that it's really helped me realize is that like, I gotta slow way down to meet people where they're at. And when I do that, then it's actually easier for me too, right? So I think so often when we think about going to a place like Stanford or really any graduate education, like it is such a privilege, right? Like Knight Hennessy is this incredible privilege. I went to grad school during the pandemic when things were really scary outside, but I could kind of like bury my head in books, right? And just be a student. And now I'm like slowly like unveiling myself and going back out into the world. And some of that makes it a lot easier because I'll talk to somebody who's like, you know, I'm regularly, I'm like convincing people to run for office in a way that like they've never thought about, like 30 minutes later, they're like, I guess I'm running for school board now, right? And I'm like, okay, well, come join us. But you know, in a lot of other ways, it is a big task. It feels like I'm just one person. I can't do it all by myself. And I just try and slow down and focus on like, what is the one thing that I can do right now? That's right in front of me that I have power over. And I've been meditating a lot. That's like extraordinarily helpful for me. Growing up, had a lot of depression and anxiety. And so sought a lot of treatment for that over the years and that's been really helpful. But meditation right now in my life gives me just a moment to be and not do, because the work is never ending. And once I gave up on the idea of the work ever ending, it suddenly became a lot more easier to do the work on a day-to-day basis. I no longer have the founder rush of like, oh my gosh, I have to get all these things done today. Otherwise we're not going to be funded tomorrow, right? Like, no, that's not what's going to happen. I am putting paving stones down. And I am, I like to use the analogy of like, I am holding a lantern for somebody in the dark. And if I run way far in front of them, that doesn't help them at all, right? So I have to like walk at the exact pace that people are willing to walk with. And if I can get a big group of people to do that all together, and then we have like one lantern that we can see in the dark with, I think that that is so much more meaningful and valid than me sprinting ahead all by myself, trying to do this all by myself. Because that's the kind of reform and change that I've studied for a long time that doesn't stick, it doesn't last. It doesn't make a meaningful lasting difference in kids and families and schools' lives. And so I think a lot of times that means de-centering what I actually want in this moment. What I really want in this moment is for like a hundred people to like come to me and say they want to run for school board and for me to like help them make that change and help them transform their communities. But right now, sometimes what we need to do is just go in and talk to people about like, are you happy with what your school board is doing? And if you're not, is there somebody here who wants to do more about it and starting the conversation there?
Yeah, absolutely. What I hear in that is this, the importance of deliberate speed, right? I mean, cause there are probably points where people can run with you and they go at 20 miles an hour. Which we're humans very fast, but sometimes you do need to go at a snail's pace to get it figured out. And to that point, because I know we're running out of battery soon, but we're not, we're good. Okay. But as we think about sort of maybe hitting the final leg of our conversation here to keep that running metaphor going. You've given a lot of perspective on what it's like to run EJA and being a Hennessy scholar. And I'll leave it to Taylor to talk a bit about improbable facts. But what perspective or advice do you have for folks who want to be a part of this community?
I spent a long time thinking about this because I am probably the podcast's biggest fan.
More on that later.
And I've listened to a lot of pieces of advice and I was like, what could I possibly say that somebody else hasn't said? One thing that really stumped me on the application was the section on awards. Because I had never received an award before, not a single one, like maybe since like fourth grade or something. But like, that wasn't going to go on the NHTC application.
What was the award, by the way?
I was like most likely to be voted president.
Foreshadowing moment.
And I realized when I took a step back, because I got a really good piece of advice from Tyler Chen, another Berkeley alum at an info session, that he had decided to answer the questions like with a voice memo. He had gone on a walk and he had answered all the questions with a voice memo. And I loved that because I was a much more comfortable speaker than I was a writer. And I often felt like a lot of writers block when I would like get to the computer. And so I was like, oh, if I could just talk through this stuff first, I'll come up with a lot of good material and then I can edit it afterwards. But the award section just like stumped me because that wasn't like the essay portion. It was like, I don't have any awards. Oh my God, I'm not good enough. I can't do this. Like, I don't have any awards. Maybe I should just not apply. And then I took a step back and I was like, okay, well, what do I want them to know about me? Like what is the story of Brianna and Brianna's service? Cause I Like, what is the story of Brianna and Brianna's service? Cause I worked for six years before applying to graduate school. So I was part of the like older, we used to have like an Okers, an older Knight Hennessy group.
I feel that.
And it's a little different than for folks that came straight from undergrad and have very good friends who did. And I was trying to convey like a lot of experiences and a lot of my thought that had changed between undergrad and applying. And it was my last year for consideration. So I was like, this is it. And I decided that in, in the award section, I would put down all of the committees that I had served on and all of the like public service work that I had done, which I decided were awards because they were things that I had applied for and gotten selected for and like been put on, but they were like servant leadership awards, right? Like I sat on the Chancellor's advisory committee for mental health. I was working a lot on mental health and, and suicide for undergrad students at Berkeley in the early 2010s. I sat on the children's commission in Sacramento County and I was on a, you know, so it was a way for me to take what I wanted to tell whoever was reading my applications, who I had no idea who was going to be on the other side of it. And I was like, I want you to know this about me. And I know this doesn't maybe fit perfectly in your application, but I think you're gonna still want to hear it. And I guess my advice would just be like, my first advice to Knight Hennessy for folks applying is just literally write down on a piece of paper, everything that you want them to know about you. Be your values, your story, your professional work, your non-professional work. And then fit your things into the application. Don't use the application and try and answer the questions the way that they've written them. Like tell your story and use all the space available in the application to do so. Because I was like, look, if they don't consider these awards, they don't consider the service that I've done on these committees and like the, the work that I've done here as something worthy of award, then this isn't the right place for me.
So you talked a lot about portions of the Knight Hennessy application that you worked very hard on and put a lot of thought into. What were the improbable facts like for you?
I enjoyed the improbable fact section. I know that it's probably like the place that people have like most existential dread about doing. Because they're like, what is this possibly mean? And I was like, ooh, this is fun. Like I just liked the creative challenge for it. The one that I decided I was gonna talk about, because it's like relevant again, is I created a syllabus on the Legend of Cora show on Nickelodeon.
The sequel series. Not the blue guy avatar.
Not the retailing of Pocahontas.
The, the other redoling, but.
Hero's journey.
Yeah, it's a hero's journey. Um, yeah, I created a whole class syllabus at Berkeley on the Legend of Cora. Cause my roommates and I, we would all get around and watch the show together our senior year and like absolutely just loved it. And like, one of us was an econ major, the other one was a development studies, the other one did rhetoric and peace and conflict studies, and I studied history. So we would like sit there and dissect the show from like all of our disciplinary like frameworks. And I was like, this show is so rich. Like this show talks about colonialism. It talks about genocide. It talks about imperialism. It talks about PTSD. It talks about mental health. It talks about sexuality and it's all for kids.
A lot of things the original, the original show did too, you know, just like, you know, taking it up another level. Yeah.
Yeah. And so rewatching the live action Avatar again, I think I'm gonna go back to the syllabus and create the framework for the new show. Because I think what I love about this show in particular, the way that children see the world is often through a lens in which they can truly see the injustices that are happening in the world. And they have a role to play in changing them. And that's why I love the work that I get to do, because I get to work with young people all the time who are articulating a more just vision of the future, more articulately and with more clarity than even I can, right? So I get to work with them and like help them enact that vision. But that show really was a place for me of hope and refuge. And watching it again has helped me realize that like, we need to stop putting our kids on the sidelines and trying to protect them from things that we think they can't handle. Cause they often, not only can they handle it, but right now they are dealing with it. Nobody's helping them understand it anyways.
I love that because another thing that marks our friendship is the very keen understanding of, of like media literacy. And, and I just remember you telling me like, oh my God, you haven't seen The Matrix? We have to watch The Matrix.
And then I invited you over to come watch The Matrix. Yeah. Cause I was just, yeah.
And then, you know, everything we've ever watched or listened to, it's like post-conversations on the, you know, the social commentary of it and the, you know, the political angles of everything.
I just love getting the chance to consume media and use it to like create critical consciousness and also enjoy it. Like, you know, I think that that's something that I really love about the show is that it strikes this balance between joy and finding moments of joy in a really hard situation. And also in the first series, absolutely rejects when his mentors tell him that this is a job for him and him alone. They say, the Avatar's job is to save the world and their job is to do it by themselves. And Aang says, no, I'm going to do it with my friends. And I like cried up, I like teared up the other night watching one of the episodes because I was like, I'm gonna do it with my friends too. And so many ways, like that's what Knight Hennessy has been for me is like, when I came here, I cared so deeply about changing the world. And I wanted to be around people who cared as deeply as I did. And then to get to be here and be like, wow, people all care and they're all working on different things. And we can all be in our own lanes and be doing amazing things in those lanes. But I can like set this thing down that I thought that maybe I needed to work really hard at, because I can see somebody who's doing amazing work in that lane, right? And I can focus on my lane. And, you know, coming to Stanford required a lot of shifts and perspective for me. The big one was like moving from a scarcity framework to like an abundance framework. But being in Knight Hennessy also really helped me just feel like, wow, we have a lot of abundance. Like Stanford is just a place of abundance. You know, they talk about it being like a candy shop and like, I had never been in a place of abundance like this before. And so to be around people who cared as deeply as I did was so refreshing, so encouraging. And we got to share and learn from each other, right? Like there's people like Danny Guardo, who is doing such amazing things in environmental policy and politics. And it's like a very parallel lane to what I'm trying to do in education policy. So we can sit down and we can like share exact notes on like what we're doing and how we're doing it, but he's gonna go do it in Chile, right? And I can feel like I can learn from that and I can see what he's doing. And to not feel like you have to save the world by yourself, because nobody does. And so coming to Knight Hennessy and coming to Stanford has really allowed me to like open up my brain to that abundance. And to realize that there are lots and lots of people who want to help and I just need to figure out a way to work with them to do that.
And you know, I want to highlight that anyone who has been part of the Knight Hennessy program while you were here as, as an active scholar, I think would say that you have been one of the most transformative and core members of this community. Both in influencing what the community looks like and prioritizes and how you made people feel as a friend while you were here. Cause I and a lot of other people can attest that we have learned from each other, but you've also particularly been a guide and a mentor and a dear friend in times, in times of great need. And helping people build scholar-driven events, doing the fountain hopping and the social side of things. And serving on the finance committee and serving on the scholar board. And then saying to people, hey, here's how you do this. Here's how things work behind the scenes. And here's why you should feel comfortable and confident taking on this responsibility, but also making time to have fun in your life, you know? This energy that is so giving and so kind and just made me feel so welcomed once I came here. You were one of the people whose energy I latched onto immediately.
Yeah. Well, I also cornered you in a line at a retreat.
And that's where I'm going with this. You have a story to share because listeners may have caught on, you are the reason this podcast exists, Brianna Mullin.
I'm one of the reasons.
Remember the Avatar story?
I'm Katara. I'm here to like make people understand what their roles are, but you know, yeah.
Yeah, of course. You, there are many co-founders and you are the OG co-founder.
I'm the OG co-founder. I'm the person who didn't let it last.
Wait, so it's a bar from, from Cora. So then are you, um, uh, what's the name of the, of the first avatar? Juan, Avatar Juan.
I'm Avatar Juan. Okay. I can't take, I'll take that identity. I'm like, I'm down. Past the legacy reincarnation. I love it. I love it. I love it.
So you did at, at my first Knight Hennessy retreat in Asilomar, which I believe you mentioned briefly earlier. Yeah. A couple of things you mentioned briefly, Asilomar, Danny Garado, these come back into play. So you cornered me in a line. But would you back it up a little and tell the whole story of how this podcast came into reality?
So Asilomar was my first retreat for Knight Hennessy. We had been, COVID was the year before.
Yeah. So it was both our first retreat.
And so, yeah, I was like so excited to come in person and meet everybody. I got to interview Michael Tubbs earlier that morning. It was just like an absolute pie of the day for me. And earlier on the way there, Danny Garado, who was actually my downstairs neighbor for two and a half years when I was at Stanford, him and his wife.
Lovely man.
Gorgeous. Danny and Katya.
Mom and dad.
And Katya did my program afterwards at the GSE. So we were really close. We spent a lot of dinner time together, especially during the pandemic when it was just like a couple of us. And, um, I was sitting in the bus and I saw a gas station on the like drive down. And I turned to Danny and I said, Danny, like what are gonna happen at gas stations when we like don't use gas anymore, right? Like this is the future that like we're imagining, right? It's like, there will be a gas, a fossil free future. I believe in a fossil free future. And so then what's gonna happen with all these gas stations? They're all over the world. They're everywhere. And like, we've filled all this infrastructure. What are we gonna do with it? And he turned to me and he said, oh, I have all these ideas. Like we just did a class project on this. You can use the tank underneath the gas station as like a composter. You can use the building to be like a post office for packages. You can turn it into a cafe. Like we've done these design challenges to reimagine what gas stations are gonna look like. And I was like, that's incredible. That's amazing. I never would have learned that if I hadn't been able to turn to this amazing Knight Hennessy scholar who knows this issue so well, right? Like who studies this, this question in such detail? And so at the retreat, the executive director, Tina Seelick, who had just started just a couple of months beforehand, led us through an exercise called Imagine a World. And we were all asked to like put on an index card, like what was the world we imagined? So that we could kind of talk about it and use it as an icebreaker. And after this exercise, we were all going down to lunch. We were waiting in line and I was percolating on this. I was like, this is such a cool exercise. Like I love, the question has so many similarities with like Afrofuturism and what Afrofuturism has done in terms of like helping people imagine a world without oppression. And like, how can, when we get past our current status quo and start to imagining building something new? We can actually solve a lot of our problems that we're dealing with right now. Cause so often we get stuck in solving the problem over and over again. And I ran into you in line.
Waiting and waiting for lunch?
Waiting for lunch. And Danny was right there and I turned to you and I turned to Danny and I was like, what if this was like a podcast? Like what if we like asked each other like, and talked like, and had the conversations that we are constantly having in the community? Which is like imagining a world that is a lot better than the world that we currently have right now. And so lots of amazing people, including Jordan Conker, Anthony Garado, and Taylor, you and, and I first started in this very room. Meeting with KHS staff and talking to them about this podcast that we wanted to run and we wanted it to be scholar run. And I'm just so proud of what you and Willie have done with it because as an alum now, like it's an amazing way for me to stay in touch with scholars in the community, to learn what's going on. And honestly, I spent a lot of time in my car and a lot of time driving all across the state to work with schools. And sometimes I just need a little dose of inspiration and hope. And this podcast gives it to me every time. It's like being back at Denning.
It makes me so happy to hear you say that. And the fact that we get to do this today, it feels very full circle. And yeah, it, I'm so glad that it's out there in the world for people to listen to. And evidently, you know, some folks are connecting with it and really enjoying it. So.
Yeah.
We did it.
We did it. We did it. I mean, I'm so grateful that when I turned to you in line, you were, you were a yes and person, Taylor. And you brought a ton of skillsets that I did not have to this podcast, largely having done a podcast before. And I think part of it for me, being a first gen scholar was really about how can we open up the information and resources that we have here to the greater community? Because I didn't want to feel like I was coming to Stanford and just getting things for myself and getting, and like making out like a bandit and then leaving, right? Like I wanted to feel like I was leaving the university open a little bit more, even just like a quarter of an inch cracked the door for the next person to come through and see what they can do with it. Because I so deeply believe in student and scholars abilities to shape the program, shape the university. You know, I believe in shared governance to my bones. And so I think this podcast is a really amazing way for scholars to get to share their visions and connect with people outside of Knight Hennessy who might be able to help them enact those visions. Because just like Aang, we're gonna need all of our friends to do it, to make the world a better place. And we need lots of people outside of Stanford to do that too.
Amen. What a beautiful way to close this out. Incredible segue.
I have one full circle thing that I wanted to add. I mentioned that when I was 16, I went to the school board meeting and they decided to eliminate the elementary school music program. And that this was kind of like my origin story of like how I ended up in school board politics. Well, the February that I got into Knight Hennessy, one of my good friends who was the drum major at my high school, had taken over the music school program and he was the teacher now. He'd gotten his masters in education and in music at UCLA. And had gone back and was now teaching the programs. Amazing full circle moment for him and for my band teacher. And he calls me and he says, Brianna, they're doing it again. They're gonna cancel, they're gonna eliminate the elementary school music program. And I was like, oh, this is my full circle moment. And so 10 years later, I went back and I helped organize all the music school teachers and students and families in the district. And I helped them write their public comments and feel comfortable and courageous enough to go up to the board and fight for like to keep elementary school music in the district. And I went up and I went to the board and I gave my public comment again. And the same board member who had chastised me 12 years earlier was still there. And so I had the chance to look at her and tell her that she had told me to go to Sacramento because I didn't know what was going on. And that I had, and I had worked for the state superintendent. I had worked for the California Department of Education and I had worked for the California School Board Association. And that it was within her power to save this elementary school music program and that she couldn't tell anybody in the room that it wasn't. Because I had gone on this like long arc journey to learn the answers, to come back to the same moment, to come back to the exact same place in the exact same elementary school gymnasium and stand in front of public comment and tell her that this was within her power. And yeah, I stayed till like 2:00 AM. I bought pizza for all the high school band kids who were hanging out in the back, just like I had been a decade ago. They had no idea who I was. They were like, why is this lady bringing us pizza? But they didn't ask questions. They just immediately ate the pizza. And at 2:00 AM, yeah, they voted to, to keep the elementary school music program. So.
It's like the end of a sports movie.
Yeah. It's like my Rocky moment, like, you know, coming out of that gym at like 1:30 in the morning and realizing that like, we can do this. We can create a really strong public school system that serves kids in the ways that they need it. But it's just gonna take a lot of work and it's gonna take us building a lot of community along the way.
I'm so glad that California has you helping to build that community. And I know that you're gonna have a lot more landmark moments like that along your career, a lot more Rocky moments to come.
Yeah. You gotta have the Rocky moments to fuel you when you don't have, when you're, you know, Rocky also has a lot of low moments, right? Like that's the key of his, his hero's journey. And so I think that it's very easy to like gloss over the really hard moments that I've experienced in, in this journey. And, you know, being in graduate school is hard. Like anybody who tells you it isn't, it's not telling you the whole truth. But this community and the people here, especially those who helped me carry me through those hard moments, like you, like Willie, like Seth Colcler. So many great people, I can't even list them all, but they're all part of what we're doing now. So we've had 25 scholars and counting involved in Education Justice Academy. I have a school, I have a finance committee meeting in like an hour with them. So I, I'm so excited to see what this podcast grows into, what the community grows into. Because yeah, I feel like as a servant leader, my job is to leave things better than the way that I found them.
Thank you so much for coming and spending time with us today and for sharing your story. And I'm so excited for folks to be able to hear this. And then follow up and go find out more about Education Justice Academy and all the other amazing ways that that is, that that is changing the landscape of school board activity in, in California.
Thank you so much, Taylor. Thank you for having me on the podcast.
Of course. Thank you for joining us for this episode of Imagine a World, where we hear from inspiring members of the KHS community who are making significant contributions in their respective fields, challenging the status quo and pushing the boundaries of what is possible as they imagine the world they want to see.
This podcast is sponsored by Knight Hennessy Scholars at Stanford University. A multidisciplinary, multicultural graduate fellowship program, providing scholars with financial support to pursue graduate studies at Stanford, while helping equip them to be visionary, courageous and collaborative leaders who address complex challenges facing the world. Follow us on social media at Knight Hennessy and visit our website at kh.stanford.edu to learn more about the program and our community.